Okay, Kathy, you're on.
I'm gonna make a motion to open the meeting of November eighth, twenty twenty-three at six oh two P M.
I'll second it. Second. All those in favor?
Hi.
We need a vote? Okay, let's go. Vote. Jan?
Uh, yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Mary Lou?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Laurel?
Yes.
And Bob says he has also. Okay. First order is the review of the minutes. Anyone have any questions on the minutes?
I would just like to thank Laurel for taking the minutes last.
Not a problem. I almost feel like I have a lack of something to do when I'm not doing this. I'm getting used to being. I know. Not a problem.
No, but thank you for doing.
Okay, we're all set on the minutes? All those in favor of approving the minutes? Lee, Jan?
Hi.
Kathy?
Hi.
Mary Lou?
Hi.
Nancy?
Yes.
Jay?
I was about here, so I have to abstain.
Okay. Laurel?
Yes.
And Bob says yes.
Oh, that's right, Nancy has to abstain, she wasn't here.
Oh, alright, I abst- I abstained.
Not at this meeting, but I'm gonna go back and review it. Uh, the rules state that even though you weren't here, you can vote on approving it, believe it or not.
It doesn't make sense.
Yeah.
What rules?
Dr. Roberts' rules. And I read it when I was doing some of the compliance stuff that you.
Oh.
That we go through, but I promise next meeting. I'll have it.
To do that, because if you're not here, how, you know, yeah, they voted three thousand dollars.
Well, I think it says that as long as they reviewed the minutes and are familiar with the meeting, that they can.
But they could have watched it, I suppose.
Yeah, they watched the meeting, that's different.
I don't know, I don't know either.
So.
No, it just says review. Review the minutes and are familiar with the process.
Yep. Okay, uh. Next up is the treasurer's report. And I wanna make a little announcement that some of you may already be aware of, but Mary Lou will not be running for election next term, which means we have two big shoes and boots to fill. We have to fill Mary Lou's, Mary Lou's spot. And also the treasurer's spot. And I don't know which is gonna be more, more, more difficult. Uh, the treasurer's spot will be filled presumably by someone that's already on the board.
Yeah, we wouldn't want someone.
New person coming in unless it's a. I don't, I don't know the history.
Or it could be a former, it could be a former trustee or something that would know at least what's.
So.
But I don't see any of them coming.
Mary Lou, we fully understand.
Yes.
Your wanting to depart us. We'll miss you.
But you're not leaving yet.
But give us your phone number, give us your email, because we'll be in touch a lot.
I'd be happy to help any, if, if I can. Um, it's, um. I'm looking, I, I, I think it's time for somebody younger and with a little bit more energy. Um, I, I'm so delighted that we've, we've, um, on the radar now is doing something with the building. And that has made me so happy, and I thought, you know, we need somebody who is knowledgeable, who's got a lot of energy and is interested in, in bringing that, bringing something like that through. And I think it's time to, um, to get, you know, somebody like that because it's, it's important, really important. Yeah.
It's a tough job, and you did a great job.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you.
Stay on top of everything.
Yeah, so it'll be, I mean, the, the election is in May, so, you know, I mean, you know, I plan on, you know, staying, staying on the board till the election, but you'll have to get somebody by May because it, as of, as of that election, you will no longer have a trustee but a treasurer. You know, I mean, you might get a trustee because you get somebody to run, but you won't have a treasurer, so you've gotta get somebody before then to do it.
Yeah, and unlike the other positions, it's a bonded position, and we need to get approvals and all that.
Yeah.
So that's.
We have people on the board that have been on the board that haven't held an officership, and that might be a good time to, uh, to go that way.
We'll see who steps up.
Yeah.
Mary Lou, why don't you grace us with your presentation?
Not, not much of one. I did send you the, um, the monthly Bartholomew, um, report, and I hope everybody got that. And also, um, it seems like, seems as though we have, um, the two, the two most recent Vanguard, um, reports, they're the quarterly reports, actually, um, came to the library, which they never do, they go to the town hall usually, and then, you know, we get them, you know, after the, after the town treasurer has them. And, um, but these came to the library, they were in the file. Uh, and, um, and so I have the, um, and I, I, I have the September, the quarterly report, and, um, um, hopefully, um, the next quarterly report will come electronically, and will be able to be shared with you in the same way as the Bartholomew report is shared with you. Uh, and so you won't just have to depend on somebody reading numbers to you, but you'll have the, you know, the actual report that you can look at yourself. But, um, the most recent, um, quarterly, which is, uh, it was September thirtieth, um, the, um, we have two accounts, the short-term treasury and the total stock market index. And the total short-term treasury, the balance on, um, nine thirty was five thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars and ninety-seven cents. The balance of the total stock market index is fourteen thousand, fifty-nine dollars and ninety-three cents, and the total on the account value is nineteen thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars and ninety cents. So that, um.
Mary Lou, let me just ask a quick question. Are any of the funds restricted?
Um. I don't think these are restricted, are they, Kathy?
No, they were, they were, no, they were not restricted.
Yeah. So they're, um, okay, so, um, we, it's, you know, we, the town treasurer hadn't received them, she had no idea, you know, where they were, and, uh, and, you know, so they were in the file, and, uh, some, she has copies of them now, so it's, um, everybody is up to date with the latest ones, so. Okay, that's all I have.
We had, we do have a new, uh, setup, we have a new password, and we have, um, Mary Lou is an additional signer on the account. Um, Vanguard is not easy to deal with, and, um, so anyway, and I'll share the password with, uh, with Mary Lou and the username and the access code and with Michelle, and, um, so that's, that's that, that was a day and a half.
That will be passed on to, off, on to the, and the new treasurer.
Right.
Yeah.
And at that time, they can change the password, they can change the username, they can go in and do that at their own.
Yeah. But Kathy is to be thanked for that, she spent hours and hours and hours getting that, getting that set up, but it's finally set up and if, um, it's gonna come electronically now, so it'll make it much easier.
Good.
Thank you, Kathy.
Welcome.
Okay, that's, that's good. Any, uh, motion to accept the treasurer's report?
Make a motion to accept the treasurer's report.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Jan?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Mary Lou?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Laurel?
Yes.
And Bob says yes.
Could I ask one question, Mary Lou, there was one other thing that had come up at the, um, at the last meeting, and we went in and looked at it, if you remember, there's two H, that was the question, it was not the Woodworth, but it was the H, A Wales Fund. And that was the, um, that was the confusion, but it's completely straight now. Um, the A T Wales Fund can only be until used for building purposes or otherwise, which means it's essentially an unrestricted fund. And the other Wales.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
That was the one we had, we were, we, there was, there was one that we, that was the one we were talking about.
Right, and the Will and Wales Fund was for general purposes, so that was the confusion.
Yeah.
Good answer.
So do we have a final, uh, like, roster of all these funds and what they can be used with, can that be added in so that we have?
Everybody's got that, it's, um.
Oh, we, we, we do have.
Yep, several times, yep.
List of all the funds and the restrictions.
Funds, yeah, yeah.
Because we should update that.
Mary Lou has.
They're all, they don't change, they haven't changed.
They, 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 there was updated, is there gonna be, that's what we already have.
Wonder about the restriction, non-restruction on this one.
Oh, on the, on the whales?
Yeah.
That's how it's written, that's how it was written.
It was, it was just.
I thought there was a list of all the funds.
There are.
That's it.
Right, so do we need to update that list with this new information that, because everybody was.
The information is exactly what's on here.
Yes, that was, yeah, Mary Lou was physically holding up the list, you were looking down.
This is it. Okay.
Yeah.
Can see, it's fine. I know, I, I understand.
But you're saying the information on the whales one.
Yeah, because she was, that's what we were questioning.
They're both on there, if you look at the paper and read them, they're both on there, one on the bottom of the front page and one on the bottom of the back page.
Yeah.
So basically, I think what happened is. It was there all the time.
We needed to clarify it, and we went back to this list.
Okay.
The interpretation was, this is what it says, and this is what we're gonna do, so.
Perhaps, you, if you have, can you send that list out again to everybody along? I just hate to see us reinvent a wheel, like, you know, another two years, and, yeah, like, where's the list and who has the list?
No, it's been sent out a couple of times.
Let's see if I can, um.
I think I saw a copy of it in the file the other day when I was in the file. There's a copy in that, in the file, in the, in the office.
Our newest board members have it, that, that's my.
It doesn't hurt to just send it to everybody.
Yeah, just send it out.
I will do it.
And the more familiar we are with it, the better off we are.
Yeah.
Thank you, I appreciate that, well.
Yeah.
Just look for it.
Okay.
We brought it right away. If that can be.
Okay, okay, I guess Bob is giving me the signal. Okay, all right, I will launch into the director's report, and I know there's a lot, so I'm gonna try to go through the fir-, the main stuff that's always at the start really quickly. Um, always good numbers, does anybody have any questions about either circulation or programming numbers?
They're positive.
They're positive.
Yeah, very good.
Like, um. Okay, so I'll read the warrants then. So, warrant twenty-four thirteen was one thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars and fifty-one cents. Twenty-four fifteen was seven thousand, five hundred and eleven dollars and ninety-seven cents, the total was eight thousand, nine hundred and ninety-two dollars and forty-eight cents. Um, and you can see, I made a note that it was mostly split between the grant and Ingram, so I am now including those in the warrant totals as well, the L S T A grants. Um, any questions about that?
Find it. Oh, it's over here, I see it, it's where you were on the.
Okay.
They're like this on my thing. Okay, I found it now.
Um.
Thank you.
November second, M B L C met, we were certified, so we will be receiving a little over seventy-seven hundred dollars this month, and probably around the same amount in April. Um, so any questions about that?
That'll bring state aid balance up close to thirty thousand?
No, it'll be more like sixteen thousand.
Well, we're getting seven plus seven, and then we have a balance in, in state aid, right?
Right, oh yeah, so, so I, when I did my count, I, um, right now we have eighty-five hundred. And just with the, the seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two, we'll have sixteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-three.
And then there's an additional.
Yes, yes, and there will be that additional, um, but it's, they, they say they're, um, pretty, they're halves and halves, but they're not always the same amount, they're like close to the same amount. Um, but, yes, and, but granted, because we spend from state aid, I don't think we'll reach that balance.
Uh, is this larger than what we've received in the past?
It is, yeah. Yeah, 'cause, uh, a few years ago, we were getting like ten thousand, um, and it's gradually been increasing. And it's good, 'cause it's, um, based on circulation numbers, and of course, the state budget as well, but, um, because the state budget determines the amount of cents that we get per circ, but, um, it is based on circulation numbers, and we've been doing pretty well. For our little library.
Going back any number of meetings, I could see, yeah, Kathy saying in my brain, let's take it from state aid.
Yeah.
There's a question, is, that's our resource.
It, it doesn't, it doesn't, um, carry over.
It does.
So it does.
It carries over.
That's okay.
It carries over, but it's good, 'cause it shows that we're also like.
Needing it.
Needing it. We need it. Yeah, I mean, granted, it can't stand in for town funds, because we have to need a certain amount of money for, from the town funds, but it's, we do have a need. Um, that was, that was a good question. Uh, so a bunch of others, so, I'll go in order. Uh, flooring slash carpet update, Rebecca is aiming for January slash February. Um, I still don't know if the moving company has been approved, but I am crossing my fingers because, again, they are on state contract and they have library-specific experience and can actually take books off of the shelf, put them in order on their own book carts and move those carts, so I am, like I said, I'm crossing my fingers, they seem to know exactly what to do for a library. So, um, that's, that's the update for that.
Just out of curiosity, do you know how much, if we didn't have a special library moving company, how much a moving company would cost to do this? So are we talking like three times?
No, it's probably similar.
Similar, that's what I'm wondering, like, so there shouldn't be a big issue that, well, this is three times, if we got Joe Jones down the street to move it.
It's about similar.
These are approved contractors, so.
Right.
There won't be any issue.
Well, no, I'm saying, instead of having, you know, I could see it coming up, that why should we do a special library moving company? Can't we just have a.
It's a library.
Well, I know, but. I'm not saying this, I'm saying these, the, uh, the people that may be deciding which money to spend. It, it's not significantly like three times the cost.
And I can't say for certain, but I think this, um, an amount like this was kind of factored into our carpet.
Okay.
Anyway.
Oh, that's what my question is.
Yeah, I think it was factored in when Rebecca actually put together the, um, the capital thing, so.
So, so you're saying January and February, so.
I don't have more of a specific.
No, but, but has the town signed off on funding for this at this point?
Yes, uh, not the movers yet, but the, the carpeting, yes, it's, the, um, capital improvement has been approved for that.
Because obviously, you can't do the carpet without moving the.
Right.
Shelf.
Yes, that has been.
And the other thing too is, if the regular movers did these, the books, you'd have to, how many hours of, of staff time would it take to re-catalog, reorganize everything?
Yeah.
No, I'm just asking, thinking town hall may see it as different.
Yeah, from what I gather, it's, it's pretty basic, um, they were pretty fair to us.
Good, good, I'm just, you know.
Yeah, no, it's a good question. Um, Lee's out there.
So she hasn't said anymore about the funding of this extra amount?
Not yet, not yet.
So we're still not a hundred percent sure.
No, but I, I can still, because I think she's kind of put a bunch of it on speed, so I'll keep them.
Okay.
Keeping passing in the loop. Uh, so, the next is the action plan that I have to submit by December first, so.
December first?
Yeah, that's why I always do it at the November meeting.
Oh.
Uh, which is very, it's pretty basic, I go through the strategic plan, and based on that, I put in the actions in a hopeful timeframe, and a hopeful group of people that will, um, be doing the action.
So, does this relate to your request to have someone to meet with you to work on this?
No.
No, that's separate?
No, this, this is pretty basic to put together. It's just that, um, I think M B L C likes to know that we are still like going through the strategic plan every year and making sure that we are on target, or at least trying to be, so.
So I only had the one question?
Yeah.
For the first goal, um, you know, the actions, the, the second one says provide a variety of weekly programs for children of all ages.
Oh, bye. And that's. Wrote the wrong fiscal year. On that.
Oh.
Anyway, what was your question?
Um, you know, that the youth services librarian, wouldn't you also have the adult services provide, maybe not weekly, but like, I guess I'm asking, why is it only youth and not the adult, because she has weekly programs.
She does.
Yeah, both of them do.
It's, it's just because I took that specific action from the strategic plan, it's not on the strategic plan because it was already happening, I think, back in twenty eighteen, when the strategic plan was being written.
I got you, all right.
So.
This is reminding everyone that the youth services has to have it happening.
I mean, I can kind of change it a little, I can say provide weekly programs for all ages and put both groups um, or both librarians written in here.
I mean, I just.
People would.
I just felt like, it's like, wow, is this because she hasn't been, she's been doing.
Yeah, no, 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 it's just from.
It's going from the, okay.
Yeah. I mean, I don't think M B L C would mind if I changed the wording a little bit, I did it on something else somewhere, but I, um, otherwise.
I mean, that was the only thing I saw, 'cause I see the other, making connections with the other libraries.
Yeah.
That you had both of them in there.
Yeah, these are just, it's because it's all from the strategic plan.
Strategic plan, okay.
Aren't these things that we're already doing, though?
Some of it, yeah, but some of it, so, on the strategic plan, some of it says all fiscal years. So I listed the things that say all fiscal years.
Okay, got you, got you, got you, okay.
Yeah. So, the ones especially say but, that throughout the year, those are all fiscal years usually.
So the goal two is tied in with the move?
Yeah, yeah, and I just wrote by the summer, because that's.
Hopefully.
Yeah, hopefully it'll be done before fiscal year twenty-five, but it'll, it's, we needed to put something there. And it'll be good if we get it done early. Mm-hmm.
Goal three. Expand our open hours based on community needs and resources from the town, that that's a money issue.
It is a money issue. I mean, that's just.
That's a good addition, I think we can, can we put that on, I mean, we depend it on that.
Based on community need and town government support?
Okay, yeah.
I have a question on that too, so you have, um, the general public providing programs to the general public about research?
Hmm.
And just the youth services librarian for that one as well?
Yes, um.
Because she's already going out to the
Yeah.
High school and middle school.
I mean, I, I know it, that's not perfect, I, um.
Would this be tied in with what Matt does for the, uh?
The technology?
Yeah.
Oh. Oh.
Sounds perfect.
So, youth services librarian or comma, library assistants?
Like if somebody was gonna, if he, he could show somebody maybe how to use U S news streaming or something like that.
Yeah.
The youth service librarian student I watch.
Right.
Yeah, and sometimes by whom, and if it says, like, youth services librarian, that doesn't mean that they're necessarily leading it, it does mean that they can delegate it. That just means that they are in charge of that task. I mean, I, I would oversee them, but but I will put library assistants.
Goal four is a real challenge.
Yes. But that's why I put timeframe and of fiscal year twenty-five. Because we are going to do our best, and I, I agree that it is very important, so, and I, I mean, Lauren has been making progress this past month, so even, it's not even in her job description, so I think that's pretty.
That's, can I, that's one thing that I think that should be pointed out. If it's, I'm sorry, was.
Yeah.
Did you hear me? Oh, I'm sorry, Lee, I didn't even hear you.
Oh, that's okay.
Sorting things from the temporary archival boxes into more permanent ones, that's what I mean.
Okay.
Yes, Kathy?
The point, yeah, the point is, I, I went over her job description, and in nowhere in her job description, uh, is there any reference to that at all, and I think we have to be kind of careful to make that, uh, a priority for her job when it isn't spelled out, it isn't put in writing.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I agree.
There could be a real issue with that, um.
Well, can we say senior library assistant?
Where?
Well, by whom, instead of the senior library assistant?
It's none of their job descriptions.
I mean, and like I said, it doesn't have to be perfect, she can also, even if her position is listed here, it means if we do have at some point a volunteer, she can delegate that, and I could also delegate that. But by.
And, and give some oversight.
Yes. Yeah, it doesn't mean she's physically doing every single one of these things.
Would you say that she is the primary person, or point person, doing the whole historical archival thing?
Um, I do.
In terms of staff?
Mainly because she's the most knowledgeable, she does, if she is unsure.
At, you know, speak with her and say, you know, in addition to your job description, let's change it, since you like to do this, and you are so knowledgeable in that, you know, and not make it like, it's more, it's going to be more work, but but that would be her, more of her priority than, you know, putting covers on a book or something, you know, like.
Yeah, I, I don't have any problem with that, I just know that.
So that, you know, nothing would be questioned about.
Yeah.
That's not my job description, I don't have to, because I think she does enjoy doing that.
I think so too. I, I also just think that it's going to be, and I'm not saying no, I, I just need to figure out how her eighteen and a half hours are gonna be balanced. That's all.
Exactly, that's, yeah, and it's, it's hard to put too much on her, her, her written job description is her responsibility. Beyond that, if it's not in writing and it hasn't been changed, you have to be careful how much you've put on someone.
Yeah.
I, I think we also need some sort of task list that explains, for example, create a digital collection. Uh, what does that mean? Lauren, I don't think can do that, because you're talking about, you know, a system knowledge.
The, yeah, I mean, that, what I was thinking of when we joined, um, Digital Commonwealth, that would be, like, she's a point person, she's listed by whom, but really, it would be Digital Commonwealth. That's what I mean.
So we need. We need to pull in also.
Oh, we're always, yeah, I mean, there, there is a need for that, for sure.
Now, was there a cost to using Commonwealth resources or?
Their digital Commonwealth has a membership cost. I. Actually contacted them.
Technical support, garden.
They basically scan documents that need to be scanned and put them up. Um for everyone who needs access to them. Everybody has access to see that, to see in the documents. If you look at the website, if you have a, if you look it up later, you can see that. Different libraries have their collections uploaded to it.
Do you think that it might be worthwhile to try to find a um person getting their MLS? Who might be wanting to go into archival materials? To do one of their independent studies or something and help us, but you do need more in man hours.
Yeah, I will need to talk to Lauren first about the scope of what that. The description of all of that would be, but um, yeah, no, that wouldn't. That wouldn't be a bad idea.
And we're not gonna pursue getting a scanner here then?
I do think that. The space that we have, it's, it's kind of hard. To scan the documents that we have, but actually physically have a scanner. Cause some of the documents are, are huge. They're like rolled up and long. So that, that might make things tough. Well, good questions, though.
Well, this is submitted to some of the.
I, I obviously, I, I would. Amend everything and then submit it after that.
Okay, there was a culture.
MBLC. So I just. If that, are there any other questions? It's all hopefully pretty basic.
You submitted coffee to the town hall, just the ability.
Just MBLC. I mean, I don't think it would hurt if I, after I amend it, to send it to Rebecca, so she has it, but she also has the strategic plan as well.
Good job.
Thank you. Yes, yes. So Bob, I think someone should, they should, should have patient vote to. Approve as amended.
Someone want to make a motion to approve the, what's the title of this?
The action plan for fiscal year twenty five as amended.
Okay, Lee, second?
Second.
All those in favor, Lee?
I.
Jan?
Hi.
Kathy?
Hi.
Mary Lou?
Hi.
Nancy?
Yes.
Jay, I. Laurel?
Yes. Excuse me, who made that a miss- original motion?
Lee.
Ida, Lee Thomas.
Thank you, Lee. All right, thank you, Jay.
The next in the list was just an update. The monies from the LSTA grant have been dispersed. They have, we've been. Utilizing them, you can see, but also, I mean, obviously, there's, there are a lot of physical changes, but there's also. Um programming changes, there's certain monthly programs that we are having now, which is awesome. Fantastic. I mean, because we have Eric Clemensy every month doing music for kids. We have yoga every month for kids. There are um presenters coming in. We just have the Seacoast Science Center do a turtle program. So, I think just about every month, there's a program like that as well. They mostly focus on steam. Which is great. All right, the policy, did everyone get a chance to read the new policy? It's just kind of an update to what we had before. Um I use some of the same wording from the workplace ability policy, but I merged it into a code of conduct. For personnel. I have just been finding a need for it within the staff. I think, I mean. If you, if you read my um. My, my evaluation, you saw that there have been interstaff issues going on for a little bit. And for a while, they get fixed and for a while they don't, so. I am putting more responsibility on myself as well with this policy. So obviously, my responsibility in addition to. The regular stuff that I should be doing, obviously investigating issues and um. And following through and going through the um disciplinary actions if needed. I am also going to be discussing these expectations at every other staff meeting. It's very, very needed right now. So I also wanted the trustees to approve the signature page. Because there have, when I. It was last year, I gave everybody. A copy of the workplace ability policy. Um and wrote up a signature page, but. There, there was somebody who refused to sign it and. I want this to be an official adopted by the trustees thing, so that I can.
Move forward.
Move forward, so if it's needed. I, I took some wording from Middleton, uh Middleton's director, Loretta was kind enough to send me what she had for her own and I took. I, I did some paraphrasing of hers and then I used some of our form- former wording.
Very well.
Thank you.
I make a motion to approve the uh, what are we calling it, the workplace?
We do discussion. So you should make a motion. Discussion will be after.
I make a motion to approve the policy, including the signature page.
I'll second that.
Okay. Question?
Yes.
What was the reason given for not signing?
The staff member believed that another staff member did sign it. Wasn't actually following it. But, I mean, I didn't agree with that. But it, it was really, it wasn't an official thing, so I just said.
Each person has to be responsible for themselves.
Yeah, I would look at it more as here is the policy. Uh not, you didn't follow it last week, but you're now gonna follow it. Here it is. We want to make sure that you know what the policy is and our expectation is going forward that you adhere to it.
Yeah.
So the person who is signing it didn't say from day one, I, I was following this, define, oh, I understand what the policy is.
Yeah, I mean, my plan is at the staff meeting next month, I'm gonna go over this for the first time. With them, hand it to them all in person, except for the pages who won't be there, but I'll just give it, give it to them afterwards. I don't, I'm not worried about them. And have them all read it and sign it then and there.
That I understand.
Yes, they understand. I will go through all of the principles and scope and. Everything written underneath as well.
Good.
I have a plan.
Okay, so this is all backed up with town policy?
Yes, so um I have also been there. See, the thing with town policy is that. The um. The personnel procedures manual is very basic and it's. You know, it's very much, don't use vulgar language, don't do this, don't kick people, don't whatever, um but. I, I talked to Rebecca about doing this as well and she said it's okay if we have our own basic code of conduct and then I'll have. I'll also be sending her this so that she obviously is the TA is aware of. What needs to be known.
See that it makes sense because the staff here is probably in more than the public eye than like the highway department's staff.
Yeah, very in the public eye and that's. Hmm, one of the reasons for this, for sure.
Do you, I just had one other question. Do you anticipate people will disagree on the definitions of, of some of these things that? I, I was just in a situation once where, you know, somebody said a valid. Criticism and the, they were sitting and said they were being bold and it was obviously not. It was just a disagreement on. You know, in a meeting and some, because there was. Bad blood there. Immediately interpreted it as bullying, but really for any observer, you would say that. Criticism, you know, something we're trying to work on, so I'm just.
Coming from recent experience. Coming from recent experience, I will say that. That in, that puts more responsibility on me. I, I'll be investigating the situation and I'll have to make a determination based on. What the parties say, then even what observers say. So.
It's difficult.
It's difficult, but I need to do it. Yeah, I need to do it.
Jack Nicholson, can you handle the truth?
Uh, do you want to rename the?
So I got a serious, can you, you feel, you, you feel confident about being able to do whatever confrontation you have to do? Cause you're a very nice person. Imagine that would be hard.
I, I, I know it doesn't seem that way, but I do have thick skin.
And you know what, having this is a backup.
Yeah, this will be backup.
The thing is, she's the arbiter, that's the point.
Right, yeah. But I think having something this.
Concrete.
Concrete and supportive and not, there's really no shades of gray here. And it's like, this is what it says and this is what's happened and.
Yeah, and I think.
Necessary that, you know.
It's something that needs to happen because without this, without enforcing it, without going over it at town, not town, staff meetings. We'll, we'll lose more staff. That's just. Something, it's something that's happened throughout the years and no more. I am. I have been learning on the job as well over the past several years. It has just been building up. I mean, the learning has this too. But I, I know it's time to be a little bit more fierce, so. That's the plan.
No, I, I think this is very well done and I think it will be much, much more supportive of. You too, of, you know, you're doing what, yeah. Yeah, he has the backup, okay. So.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Lee?
I.
Jan? Kathy?
Hi.
Mary Lou?
Hi.
Nancy?
Hi.
Jay?
I.
Laurel?
I.
Bob, yes.
Oh, I thought you wanted the trustees to sign it.
No, 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 no. The signature page is for the staff.
I just wanted an official part of.
I thought you meant you wanted us, yes, we did it. No, but I meant, did you want us, our signatures, like the trustees are behind this.
Oh, we just did that.
I think the vote counts.
It does.
So I think we're okay.
Okay, just go.
I, I, I believe in and trust you all, if, if. I would have included trustees in this because, believe it or not, Middleton's does.
Well, I think it passed a certain policies that we signed.
Yeah, and it's understandable, but, you know, I think. I, I, I think all of us are in a very functional, good place.
Have to take into consideration Jay is very hard headed.
Yeah, the worst one. Okay, so here's the fun stuff, the um, the funding requests. There's a bunch of them, so we can go over. Um, the ASABET renewal is pretty basic. We renew it every year. It's our calendar museum software. It is the standard for many, many, many libraries around. If you look at a library's website in the area. Seventy percent chance that ASABET is being used. It's a fair price. There's no price increase from last year. We would be lost without ASABET.
I make a motion to approve fu- funding ASABET out of state aid.
Laura, how much?
Fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred.
Second?
I second.
All those in favor, Lee?
I.
Jan?
I.
Kathy?
Hi.
Mary Lou?
Hi.
Nancy?
Hi.
Jay?
I.
Laurel?
I.
Bob, yes.
Okay, thank you all. Uh, the next one is the funding request from Bergen for, it's really the babysitting course. Because she did include the Ryan Riordan stuff, um, but we have. But, but I'll leave that up to you about whether you want to vote for that one. Um, the babysitting course is four hundred dollars. I think it's, I know it's ten students, but I think it is well worth it. Because it's many classes.
And it's, and she had asked me a long time ago to look into it.
Yeah.
And I couldn't find it. It's just. It really, it really is, and it's something that, that they did many, many years ago here. And I'll tell you, having a daughter that took it, she made money off of it.
Yeah.
This, I actually said, these are the, the girls, there's only girls in those days, that took this course and. People who come to the library and they, they actually posted the, the kids, you know, they completed this course and they are trained babysitters and she. That's how she supported herself in high school.
I think it's something really worthwhile.
This would be four hundred dollars per, per student? We can put ten people in for four hundred dollars?
That's forty dollars a person. You can't even get med cross training for that, like CPR or.
It's true.
I make a motion to approve the babysitting uh course and to fund it out of state aid.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, just I think uh, the other advantage to it is it's, it makes, it's one more thing to make the library visible to the community.
Yeah, yeah. And to answer your question, it's the young adult crowd that it's mainly targeted for. Yeah. Yeah, I think it's posted. She, she made the flyer and advertised it as well and, yeah, so like twelve up. I'm pretty sure.
Said making the flyer, they give them permission, includes names and contacts, so parents could see that. Because I'll tell you, babysitting, it's hard to find babysitters nowadays. I see people put, putting it up on Facebook, looking for babysitters and I'm like.
The classes?
Oh, it'll be here.
It'll be here.
I don't think we need to vote on the uh, the Ryan Riordan funding. That comes from a separate entity.
Okay, great. And a waiting list probably, right?
I think there will be.
Yeah, it's probably.
Sorry, Kathy, did.
I'm not hearing people talk to this background noise. I'm sorry. I was gonna say, I don't think we need to vote on the Ryan Riordan. Funding that comes from a separate group that raised the money and.
Yes. Vote on officially repairing the children's room sink, because that's a change to the building. That, that could be something, um.
Have we talked to, to Steve McPherson about?
Yeah, he, this, this comes from him. He, he got sink people to come and look at it officially. Yeah, it's, there's been progress.
That's great.
Yeah.
Well, do we have to vote on the four hundred dollars?
Yes, for, because Kathy said stated, right? Yes, for, cause Kathy said stated, right?
Right, yeah. Moved in second, it's.
Yeah, okay, so we're voting on the four hundred dollars for the babysitting, so.
Well, that's what I meant, we need to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Lee?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Mary Lou?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Laurel?
Yes.
Bob, yes.
Thank you, everybody. Um, so, I do have a question about the funding for the Ryan Riordan, so.
Yeah.
You don't have to like submit invoices with them?
I have a debit card.
And that's fine with the town?
I mean, it it's not connected to the town in any way.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm just.
It's it's a separate account, it it was, they were fundraised.
No, I understand all that.
And it's just deposited to TD Bank and I have a debit card for it. The town is very.
But I mean, for hiring somebody to do the sink.
That's a good point, I.
Use a debit card.
But I do, I'll double check with Rebecca about that, um, she seemed. Um, I know she's all for the sink thing. Um, but I'll make sure that it's legal to do that with the card.
I I think that would be great to get that repaired and usable.
Yeah.
Super.
Yeah, I think it's great.
So should we recommend that uh, we pursue the re- repair and replacement of the sink?
Separately, or do you do you need that, like the vote on the sink?
Um.
It's a change in the building.
It's a change in the building, I think it would be safe.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, could we do it that if it came out of? If it could come out of the Riordan funds, that's where it come out of.
Hmm hmm.
But if not, we could. Do do state aid or some other.
Hmm hmm.
You know, oh, something, one of the grants of the um. Trusts that has something to do with building.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
How do we do, how do we propose?
I think maybe we. We vote to approve change from what, from the appropriate starts, just.
Okay.
That makes sense.
That sounds good.
Okay. Thank you.
What he said.
That's his motion.
Nancy, do you have that?
Sort of.
Sort of is good.
Time to write it down.
The target, Nancy, the motion is to approve the uh, the change in the sink. Using the funds of course deemed appropriate by the director.
Thank you.
Okay.
I second that.
Okay. All those in favor, Lee?
Aye.
Jan?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Mary Lou?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Jay?
Aye.
Laurel?
Aye.
Bob, yes.
Thank you. And.
Okay, the next one was the computer, Sue's computer is dying. It's right on time.
Yep.
It's right on time, so.
Don't you listen?
Max, pretty good, nice little last little one.
I know.
Um, but this, I got a quotation from MVLC's recommended workstation for staff. Um, so that is what I have here.
And they'll still set it up?
They'll set it up, they they will set it up, they will, um. I don't think they, they don't have to network it anymore because we are on the cloud with our network now.
Yeah.
What's it look like?
It's just a, it's basically gonna be the same thing.
What she has, but.
What she has, just, yeah. Yeah, exactly.
Workstation, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it might be. Like, the screen might be slightly bigger because.
Who's she, by the way?
Sue.
Sue, okay.
Sue, the um. Because I do recommend, because the monitors are sold, we we um, we would need to get an adapter, we didn't, but. I think it'll be. More prudent to get the whole thing, so.
I make a motion to buy Sue a new computer, uh, including the monitor. And I propose to take it out of state aid.
Okay, so we're voting on a computer and a workstation?
It's the same thing.
Same thing, it's it's one whole.
Yeah.
They call it a workstation, it means computer and monitor, like a station, everything is there in one piece, or.
That's a bargain.
It is, but yeah.
But I, no, I mean, in one.
One shebang.
One shebang. Rather than separate, separate, yes.
Any other ridiculous discussions like me? All those in favor, Lee?
Aye.
Jan?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Mary Lou?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Jay?
Aye.
Laurel?
Aye.
Bob, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, last one. All right, US News Stream is up, over to you, we. Did have a much higher usage than we did last year, so. I am very pleased to report that, I have, for those who had asked. I um, have seen an uptick in usage ever since I put it in. I I put it in the newsletter permanently, so it's at the bottom with all our resources, so people can access those. Um. And that way, it's going out to everybody who gets our newsletter every month, um, yeah, so. You know, in between twenty one and twenty two, we had had. The average of five searches per month, but I added up everything and we got almost three hundred total this time around, which. I think is much better, of course, I would aim for more next year, but. I think it's a good improvement.
You know, I was thinking, have you ever thought to put that at the top of the newsletter?
Yeah, so.
Rather than move like the puzzles down to the bottom, so.
Yeah.
See that first thing?
I also, um, that's a good idea, I also have this plan for at the start of the year. Kind of, um, in each newsletter highlighting something, so of course.
You know, we have this, or.
Yeah, and of course, those those will would be cycled every year as well, but, um. I agree, moving the resources to the top is a, I'll play around with the the layout.
Oh, it looks.
Yeah.
Garner enough, another few people seeing it who don't scroll all the way to the.
That's a good idea. To top.
I love that resource.
Yeah, I love it too.
You want an article, and if you don't subscribe to the paper, you can't get it, and you go there and there it is.
You can find almost any. Paper.
I didn't even know that.
Yeah.
Here we are like.
You you wanna read the Boston Globe today, it's there.
Without.
New York Times.
What's your password?
Exactly, I mean, you have to log in through your library account.
Yeah, that's.
That's it.
Well, then John doesn't have to buy them, he gets this digital Boston Globe every day and he's paying, I don't know what we're paying for.
Yeah, it doesn't have the pictures.
Oh, won't have comics, forget it.
But you just want the text, the full text is there, or pretty much anything.
And you can email it to someone.
Yeah, you can download, you can search terms and it'll come up with anything that comes up. With that term and any of the papers.
They don't have local papers, do they?
Um, no.
No.
No, I mean. They they do have, so I looked, I I I have been looking and I. I haven't found the ones from around here yet, I I did look and see if they had local papers from where. I grew up and they have that one, but only a few articles per day from that one, so. Stuff could be added, but they have a good amount of stuff, they have a good amount of publications.
So, do you need to vote on that, right?
Yes, cause it's money. Um, how. Yeah, it's two thousand thirty one dollars and twenty one cents, I put a comma instead of a period, but it's twenty one cents.
You have a motion to approve?
Well, we have to figure out where we're taking it from, should it be from state aid?
Say state aid, I make a motion to take it from state aid.
We are getting that replenishment.
Any discussion?
Second from Jay, Nancy.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor, Lee?
Yes.
Jan?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Mary Lou?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Jay?
Aye.
Laurel?
Yeah.
Bob, this.
Thank you. That that's all I have in my report.
Yeah, uh, question, you sent copies of the the furniture, was that we wanna discuss or is this for us to continue perusing?
Can peruse, um, I also want to kind of pull the other libraries and see. If they've actually bought any of these, but these are, I added some that had. Some that weren't like armchairs, because, um, Mary Lou did make a good point to that. For some adults, especially.
Yeah.
Uh, having no arms isn't as accessible, so I.
Almost else can't get up with over nine.
Which is, you know what, I didn't think of that, so I thank Mary Lou, you know, thank you. Um, so I included more ideas.
Yeah, my takeaway from it is, I had no idea furniture was so expensive.
I think it's like, it's the the library grade vinyl, some of it is because they have power attached, but of course. Yeah, it's heavy duty, this one that has power attached though is one of the cheaper ones, I am just showing everybody, it wouldn't be in that color, but. It's not.
I really hope not.
It would match the screen over there.
Yeah, it it would clash with the new carpet, so we're not getting that color jam, so. But, um, like for example, yes, they're heavier grade and they're made to. Last awhile, but I do wanna, and they have the vinyl and they're very easy to clean and. Um, I do wanna see if any other libraries have purchased any of these and how they're faring, um, but.
Ask them how comfortable they are.
Yes, that's it.
I just, I can't, I told, I told Dusty, I can't even imagine buying furniture that you don't sit in before you buy it.
Right.
I, you know, uh, it just seems.
Is that all saying, the mind can only absorb what the hysteria can endure?
But it's it's it's, um, yeah, it you need, you know, I I always. I suggested like, you know, a furniture store, but I guess I didn't get the the library grade stuff, but. Uh.
Yeah.
So if you wanna, if you wanna poll people, ask them how comfortable they are.
Yeah.
Well, but I'm saying, okay, those couches that are out there now, which I know they're falling apart. They've been here since I've been here.
Yeah.
They're fifty years old.
But also.
Forty five years old, say.
That's cause nobody sits in them, Laurel, they're so damn uncomfortable.
Yeah, if you get out of them, I want something that's vinyl or like fake leather or something, so that I could actually clean it.
Yeah, no, that's the only trouble with one.
Yeah, doesn't seem comfy, comfy, yeah.
Are they firm or are they soft? To sit in, that's the thing.
That's.
Will they be easy to get out of?
Yeah.
Not too soft.
Okay.
I mean, that that and and I kind of, that that was it, like, if we're saying, you wanna try it out and see it, so.
Well, why don't we see if are there any libraries really close by who have those?
I don't know yet, I plan to investigate this, yes.
That's a good idea, and then maybe a couple of people can go and try them out.
Yeah, or a library that's recently been renovated might have some new.
Yeah, I mean, you know.
Suggest. Uh, did you make a mistake buying this or whatever, you know, different things, what did you buy and do you, are you happy with it?
I mean.
Because we can't try it on.
I know.
If anyone wants to go with me, you could be my ride, so.
Do a library.
Let's wait until you and you have to go, I mean, if you, I I'm just wondering, like, what do other libraries have that are comfy? Um.
If you decide to do it, I can do it.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, you could, yeah, see, can you get up in? There you go.
I know, we always got complaints in Hamilton about the the chairs.
Hmm.
The comfortable chairs were huge, so for smaller people, felt like Alice in Wonderland in them. They were all built when, um, I mean, they were purchased when the library was built, so it was kind, but I I heard a lot of complaints about that.
Uh huh.
So you, I think you'll never have anything that everybody will love.
Yeah, no, no, it's gonna be exactly perfect.
But you just definitely, I think, that kind of money, you wanna really.
Yeah.
Feel confident about people enjoying it.
And I was approached on Monday evening by a former trustee. Uh huh. Wanting to know why we haven't purchased, look up in the old minutes and why we haven't purchased comfortable chairs for him, and I said, we never voted for.
No, like, he thinks that it was voted, he wanted, he he asked me to ask you to look through all the minutes of twenty twenty. And I actually looked through all the minutes.
It's not there.
It's not there.
It's a discussion.
No. It was tables.
I went all the way back to like two thousand sixteen, I'm looking at the old minutes, and I'm like, he could have done it himself, go look online there, and why was he asking me?
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
It was, I, yes, it was tables.
We could get him, you know, purchase two or three comfy chairs for him. He's sitting this. He. I'm like, I don't know. But anyway, yeah, I just thought while we're talking furniture.
Yeah.
So, would these be lightweight enough to move around from one place to another?
I don't know yet, it didn't say like how many pounds. They, they each are different, that's the thing, um.
I would say we we wouldn't be interested in moving them around.
Right, yeah.
Right.
Well, okay.
We have to move it enough to vacuum under it.
Yeah, that's, that's it.
And you have to move it too when you have a group.
Right.
Together.
I'm just saying, the knitting group, we move, we sit in the one.
Yeah.
Couch, and then if it's a big group, the guys move the other couch, and we have the two couches, they can sit in.
Yeah, you need to make.
But you know, if you, like even for us, you could sit at a meeting, I mean, if they're gonna be. Lightweight enough for one of two people, and you have two people that are together and they're doing something. And you have a chair here, and then the other room, you see the other chair, you're not gonna.
My plan is to have a few setups like this.
Like that, yeah, I like that.
Yeah. Right. I mean, not exactly that, those furniture things, but something like that, so, yeah. So, like that.
Would would you consider get maybe having castres on them?
If they have the, I would get those if they're available, yes.
Just for.
If they make them available on these, yes.
Yeah.
I mean, I think you can even just install casket, can't you, just move them along, the legs are made such.
I'm sure we could, they just.
Maybe we can get the chairs to match the people tops.
You know what, there are chairs that match.
There you go, yeah.
Kid chairs.
Yeah.
They're all the primary color chairs.
Yep.
Okay, I think we're good.
I think we're good on that.
It's tree time.
More to think about, if you all come up with, if you, you all come across any, send them my way, I'll add them to the list as well.
Yeah, because I think, you know, doing, I.
It's gonna be.
Do some research and see what it is, and because especially those prices.
Yeah.
And that would be coming out of what funding?
That's, that's up to you all.
Uh, I mean, that's not something the town is capital improvement, like, don't we get a new furniture?
No, it's not capital improvement.
Yeah, I'm just double checking. So, yeah, if we're spending that money, we want to make sure that you know, it's gonna last
Yes.
Another fifty years.
God, yeah.
Well.
This will be.
Laurel, you'll be here to make sure that.
I will.
Jan?
I might.
Sure, sure. Yeah, so briefly, I just wanted to, uh, bring up, so that, as I mentioned before, Rennie kindly cut the dead tree down.
Yes.
And we've looked at the space and there really is plenty of room for a new tree.
Just the one I.
Yeah, yes. So I spoke with Rennie about it and he would really like to work out something for our place this year. And we would work with, um, Bergen and a children's program um, around putting in a new tree. And we would choose, we're, we're not sure what type of tree yet, but obviously something that would not be too, too tall. Um, maybe a native tree, a flowering tree or whatever, and, um, depending on availability, I'm certainly happy to contribute to the, the new tree. But I wanted to bring it before the board now because believe it or not, Arbor Day will be here before we know it, and just to see how the board felt if, um, you gave your approval for putting in a new tree in that spot.
Yeah, I don't think you need the board's appro, I mean, that's really town property, I think a tree would look great out there.
Yeah, I think, I think it might need to go through the town, not us.
Yeah.
I've already talked to Rennie, but I, I told Rennie, I said, I, I don't want to move forward without bringing.
It's not something really.
Bringing it before the board, just to make sure there weren't any concerns from the board, and then if you don't have any concerns, then we feel confident to just move forward on the project.
I don't have any concerns, that's for sure.
No, I.
Just that the board is, has no objection, and they view this whole, uh, process favorably, and we look forward to tying it in with, uh, Arbor Day and a children's program.
Right, and hopefully, you maybe could even get it, like, like go to a noonings or a tree service place. And say, this is for libraries, this is for Arbor Day for children, and you know, maybe they could even come out and talk about plants and.
Yeah.
And make it a whole thing, and maybe go discount for the tree.
We want to make it into a, a programming thing, so.
You know.
With a lot of benefits to it, but I do think it would benefit the library too aesthetically to.
Yes. So, yes, trees, what kind of the other trees there?
I think the crab apples, but they're around the corner, so it isn't like you would need to match.
No, that's what I'm saying, so like maybe a dogwood or something.
Yeah, I have a list of things that might work.
There is too in the fall and the birds and the, you know.
Yep, a dogwood's definitely a possibility, a native one would be.
Native, yeah.
So anyhow, if everybody feels okay about it, I'll just, um, update you when we know.
Yeah, great, good.
Thank you. Yep.
Thank you for cleaning everything out.
Next, we, we have the, the hot topic for this evening, the, uh, evaluation report. And, um, assuming that everyone got copies in the mail.
Thank you for closing.
Uh, I, I want to start out by saying I made an executive decision, and if people want the numbers behind my decision, I'll be glad to get them. But when I was collating, uh, all of the reports, uh, what was readily apparent was the majority of all of our feelings was four exceeds expectation or three meets expectations, so to me, that doesn't form the basis of a really hardcore discussion and evaluation. Plus the fact that we have minutia on all these reports, we got dozens and dozens of things. So what I did was, I, I did a, a summary for each section. And everything came out basically shooting to the middle between four and three, meaning you know, some of them lean more to exceed, some lean more to, uh, meets expectation, but my definition that I'm looking at it, it doesn't warrant, you know, any uh, detailed probing. The exception is, and what I was hoping we would do, and we did get it, is if there's a need for discussion, it'll be in the comments. And this time around, we got more comments than, uh, we, we did the last time. And, uh, yeah, I, I, I think Stacy, Stacy, Darcy had a chance to, uh, uh, look at it, which was good, I think you all had a chance to look at it, and if, if you want to come at me for the way I did the report, fine, I'll, I'll go back and I'll change it.
I don't even know how you did it.
I'll add some stuff, but yeah, but I think from this point, which if people want, we'll go through each one for the discussions, and if you feel we need to pursue some of the individual items, let's do it.
Yeah.
Okay?
Do you feel comfortable staying here, Darcy?
I don't mind, I, I have read the evaluation.
Okay.
I, I don't mind.
Besides, you've already told us you have thick skin.
I, I do.
Well, no, I, I think.
Let's jump off.
I mean, I, my feeling is, and I, maybe because I was the director and I did these constantly on my own staff, to get a four. I mean, you have to be god.
No, I disagree.
Well, but I mean, to exceed, you have to really over and above, over and above. And so a three is, you're meeting expectations and a three plus is, you're above that, you know? I think in this day and age, so many people, if you don't get an A, you're a failure, well, A is above average, you know? A B is average, or actually C is average.
Ronald Reagan was proud of his seeds. Ronald Reagan was proud of his seeds, yeah.
I mean, uh, so, what I mean is. No. So did you want, you wanted to go through?
Yeah, let's.
You do want to, okay.
Okay, so. Obviously, the first one is for technical. And overall average was three point four five on this, there were no twos and no ones, and they were four not applicable or, you know, they just, people just weren't aware. So, uh, the first comment is, uh, uh, I think, uh, Darcy should sit down with her staff and make it clear about why she takes, uh, those days off. And I think you pretty much alluded to some of the things you've been doing al- already.
Yeah, I mean, the thing is, with that, I understand the comment, but I also think that no matter what, there will be staff who are like, oh, Darcy's not here today, you know? No matter what it is, even if it's a vacation day, I've planned for ages, or a personal day, I have had to plan for a week or just a sick day. Um, I do try to communicate with them though, I, every time I do have know of something, I put it on the calendar. Um, I do communicate with Bergen and Sue always the morning of if I have a sick day, so that they can plan for the day, um. But if anybody has any other ideas.
I think you're taking time off that you're entitled to.
It's like a little complicated.
And you're the boss, that's what people do. It's like, they're always at a meeting, are they?
Yeah, so.
You don't necessarily know the time you were home finishing things up and doing.
Yeah, I, I think there will be staff that will always have something to say about that type of thing.
Communication is great.
But I do try to communicate it with Sue and Bergen as much as I can.
Talk to me about the calendar.
Oh, our staff calendar, yeah, but our. It's our Google.
What's on it, I'm not.
Um, days off, meetings, um, closed days, our staff schedule.
Who's what, working with?
Yeah.
So, so if I'm a staff and I want to know who, who's here, who's not here, or am I expected to go to a meeting today, they go on on the calendar and they see.
Yeah, well, like, for example, Sue signed up for a webinar for December ninth or something for two to three, I put it on there.
So she's not available at that time, and people know that, so that they can't.
Was it a physical calendar?
It's, it's on Google Calendar, so everybody has access to it on their phones or on the front computers.
From home too.
Yeah.
Uh, we'll gloss over.
And you're taking time off that you're entitled to, Darcy, is that correct?
Yes, yeah, of course.
That's the answer to the question.
Yeah. Yeah.
We'll skip the second one. Darcy is consistently helpful and pleasant with all patrons and volunteers. Do you agree with that?
Thank you to whoever said that.
Uh, the third one is, uh, the last time we did this, we had a lot of people saying, how on earth am I supposed to know if she does this, she does that?
Right.
And, yeah, that is a good question, but a lot of times you can infer whether it's done or not. But my recommendation is, well, spend some more time at the library, you know, get, get to know this, but I don't think the board is expected to know all of the nitty gritty and the minutia of what goes on.
Nor should they, nor should they.
Right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we, we are responsible, somebody is responsible for signing off on the payroll when, on Darcy's.
Yeah.
And Darcy always, whenever I've done it, she always explains to me
Yeah.
what, what was the personal day or sick day or whatever, I mean, so.
Happy to answer questions.
Exactly, and, um, we are responsible to do that, so.
Right, but we, we don't need to be at the library to micromanage every.
No, but I appreciate the fact that Darcy will explain, you know, what, what, what transpired, and that way I know what I'm signing, so.
Yeah.
I appreciate that.
You want to attach your name to something, Lee. Yes.
Okay, next is we got the, uh, support of board, support of board governance, and that's a three point, uh, six, three point five six. And all of the comments are very positive. And I don't know if anyone wants to discuss them, but I think it shows that we appreciate what she does for us.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Mm-hmm. Thank you to all the comments.
Okay. Technology, three point four, three point four two, and again, positive, uh, comment.
Oh, yes, that new billing system.
Well, I was, I was impressed, um, you know, when we had the, those COA meetings. And you took charge. You brought the owl over to the meeting.
Yeah.
You took care of running the whole thing, you, and then you made sure you brought it back, I mean, I, that's, I, I wrote that comment because I, I felt that the fact that you were so willing to assist another department, I think reporting everything was commendable.
Of course.
Organization. Three point four in the comments. Again, positive. Darcy meets deadlines with a definitive date. Uh, suggests tasks discussed and agreed upon at trustees' meeting, also receives a deadline date to keep the task on track. The role of the trustees is not to micromanage how the director manages their time, so that goes back to the comment about the, how do we gonna know?
Oh, who wrote that?
Uh, personnel and staffing. Uh, three point two five. Uh, and again, uh, the comment, let me read the comment. When there have been issues between staff members, I have been informed that Darcy has sometimes avoided dealing directly with those involved in a timely manner. I feel that staff management may be a goal for Darcy to work on and strengthen. As an organ, as to organization of the library, I feel that the office space could use some clear, clearing, cleaning and organizing of materials. It reflects on the respect for the library and its space.
Yeah.
My one overall comment on that, as far as the organization and the visual aspect of the space, it is cramped. And it's tough. I was there a number of times and, uh, Lauren is working on stuff, and she's got it all over the floor. And it's not all over the floor because she didn't care, she threw it there, she was trying to get her work done, and the only place she could put it is on the floor and over here.
Yeah.
Uh, some people's style is, is, is a little, little, little different, uh.
Yes.
Some people, yeah, oh, that's crooked, I gotta put it, uh, there, and, you know, so, but it's a legitimate, uh, comment, because I would look at it, understanding what's going on, but someone coming from the outside to say, holy moly, what's going on there, they have stuff all over the place, so it's a balancing act.
It's a balance, but I, I, I hear what they're saying, I definitely do. And hopefully this new policy will help with the, the staff members thing.
And Sue's new workplace with that.
Sue's, Sue's new workstation, yes.
It's gonna be bigger, it's gonna be room for more stuff.
Yes.
No, that's the monitor, I think.
Uh, the other comment, I don't understand what the senior tax work off program is, I don't know who.
Oh, the archive.
To have someone work on the archival stuff with Lauren, or.
But I'm assuming the senior refers to a high school person or.
No, 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 it's a tax program in the state that the town has that you can apply as a senior to work so many hours and get paid.
Not get paid.
Well, not get paid, but have the money taken off your taxes at the end of the year, you work, I think it's so a few less than seventy hours a year.
Yeah.
You get a thousand dollars taken off your taxes.
Yeah.
Ivy did it last year, and maybe she's doing it now, I don't know.
She is.
So, you know, you can find someone, if someone's willing to do it, a senior, and wants to have their taxes reduced, you can go and do it, so, but the thing is, you'd want to get the right person.
Yeah, it's always about the right person, no matter what, right.
Because what the comment suggests is helping Lauren, I'm not, I, I couldn't help her.
Yeah.
I wouldn't know what to do, and so.
No.
You just can't say, anybody, any, any senior citizen want to come and do this, you can't really do it that way.
No, I, yeah.
I mean, I do think there are probably people out there
Do that.
who could do that, it's just a matter of finding them.
Well, I think, I think it was also meant that, you know, yes, or is there a volunteer out there? But to try and, trying to volunteer to put in that amount of time.
Yes.
Volunteerism is not the best.
Yeah.
It, it may be someone out there that is familiar with computers and all tactical stuff that is bored and wants to get back in do, doing something, so I think is, i- if we're gonna go this route, I think we should define the type of person we need.
Yeah.
Maybe you could put something on the, on the website.
Yeah, I also want to together with Lauren, put together all words, together, together, um, like a volunteer job description for that particular task.
With the specific, this is what we need you to do.
So that.
Because we have had someone volunteer in that position and it took weeks.
Yes, so I.
The mess.
Want her to, like, since this is important to all of us and I know this, like I've said before, this is her baby, we would try to find the right person, so we need to put together a description of the task.
And what you cannot do. Well, this isn't important.
But I think that could be a potentially good plan.
You could put it out with Alyssa maybe too.
Yeah.
That if she, you know, just have it on her back burner.
Yeah.
Because she would understand a little more that it wasn't just somebody to, you know?
Yeah.
You're not coming and cutting things out for.
Oh, yeah, Alyssa's really good with that.
Children's programs.
No, she was good for what? Yeah.
Understand that.
And, and the, the senior tax program. Uh, I, apparently there are quite a few, I don't know the number, but there are quite a few possibilities or, yeah, opportunities for people to do it, and no one's really taking.
What kind of programs does the high school offer in the way of computer science, organization, technical?
I think this would involve more like a college age or, or doctor.
High school, there's a lot of sophisticated.
Other archival material. Or go for that. At the point, as it is, I don't think she goes for it.
Go to.
Oh, okay, yeah, we have to consider.
Yeah.
Simmons University. Do they do, like, they do?
Yeah, they have a, they have, um, um.
Like a student teacher, whatever it's called.
Darcy went.
Yeah.
I didn't go to.
I didn't go to Simmons.
Oh, you didn't?
No, I went to Truxall.
Oh, okay.
I mean.
But I went to URI and there was some archival, but.
But I mean, even, even if it.
Or if you have a history background even, not, you know.
Lots of.
The possibility, great if somebody was out there.
Yeah. We'll do more searching.
It's a little more than just copying the data, you gotta copy it so that you can index it.
Organizing it, it's right, at this point, it's almost more organizing it too, isn't it, like?
It's organizing, but I think this is going to be a step by step process. First, I have to go sit down with Lauren and talk about her job description and have certain times set aside for this. Sit down with Lauren and talk about her job description and have certain times set aside for this. Then we need to talk about the description for the volunteer and then. I possibly find a volunteer for it. So there's, there are a few different steps that we have to go through.
What they're at right, what Lauren's at right now is more organizing it, not copying or anything. She's not at that point yet.
Right.
Ready to copy. It's like, what's this? This belongs over here. This belongs.
I keep going back to this and I, I apologize for my memory. But it was this fellow who came in and he had this Excel.
Yeah.
File.
He's still involved.
Never seen that file.
Right, um, Bob Guptill's friend there.
Oh, Bill Newell. That is completely separate from.
Yeah, that's, that's a different.
That's a different project. That he has intermittently been working on because he has his own health issues and stuff. So he's, he's making an index.
He's doing that.
That's part of our, we've been grant gifted that part, that history. But that's a part of all the archives that we have, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, exactly.
A categorization here.
Yeah.
Where that stands at this point, or do we?
He.
He's been in, kind of in touch with you, right?
Yeah, he, he, like I said, he's intermittently had some health issues he's had to prioritize. But he's, I know he's been working on an index for the first box. Which of four, so one of four, um. So that's where that stands, but.
The ball is in his court.
Yeah, to give you context, it's all war related.
Hmm.
Historical stuff, so everything, it's, it's a chunk of everything else.
The war, people that were in Groveland. Who were involved in the different wars.
Yeah, it's biographical information of that.
And also buried up in the.
Yeah.
Right, right.
Yeah, a lot of it is documents, pictures and all that.
Yeah, yeah, it's another big project though.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so where were we?
We're on six now.
Six.
Overall rating, three point two three, and there were no comments. Does anyone have a?
What was that topic? What was it heading on that one?
Uh, planning and programming. We're good?
Yeah, so, yeah.
Seven, public relations and communication. That's three point five. I feel Dasi's communication through the website and calendar and reports to the area newspapers is to be commended. I do feel that as the library director, she should make herself more visible to the public. Assisting them or at least making a personal connection with the patrons on a regular basis. I know quite a few regular patrons who don't even know who Dasi is.
I would like to throw out there that I did the desk for two hours the other day. And I do regularly make myself.
If somebody doesn't know who you are, can't they come and introduce themselves?
Really?
Well, I, I, that was my comment.
I get what you're saying.
Don't know who you are.
I had a feeling it was you because you, I know a lot of people.
Well, I think I mentioned it to you too, cause it's like.
Yeah.
You know, people that can't come during the day can only come in the evenings on the weekends and you're not, they don't know who you are.
I hear you.
That's not her.
Oh, I, I know, but scheduling like if. Once in a blue moon that they could, that she could be there, or you know. A lot of times you're, you're not out at the desk, you're in your office.
I hear what you're saying, for sure.
It's not, it's not, I'm just saying, hey, I, 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 that was my whole comment. All of that was me. I'm, I'm hung up to it. I think you. No, but everything, I mean, I think what you are doing with the website, all of that, you're out there. Telling things that are going on in the library. Getting your staff to do that. Good.
I go back to my high school days. I have friends that were on a first name basis with the principal. Because they were called down to the principal's office any number of times. People who know Dasi. Have a need to go and find out something. And then, so if I come into the library, I find my book. I don't care who Dasi is.
Right, but I, I.
I got what I want.
To be more of the face of the library and I'm very glad she was there with the, at, you know, Groveland Day.
Oh, yeah.
That, that was, that was.
Always there at Groveland Day.
Yeah.
It's a good time.
Just, you know.
She's always at town meetings.
Hmm?
Yep.
And town meeting, yeah.
She drags us along.
The town meeting, the town meeting. Yes. At FinCom, but.
It's a, Groveland Day is a, is an important time.
Yeah, no, I mean, just, just so people have a face of the library get.
Yeah.
Cause I mean, I'm just saying my knitting group, they go on. So is Sue the director? And I'm like, no, Sue was just, I mean, should say just. But she does the adult programming.
Does the adult programming, yeah.
And, and they know the guys and they know, you know, they've met Bergen a few times. She's come a couple of times on my day.
No, I will be honest, I'm always here for Sue's mystery book club and some of them will still ask her. If she's sure, I'm always helping them at the desk, all those Wednesday mornings and.
They still don't know, yeah.
Yeah, they, some of them still mix it up and some of them don't.
Yeah.
But some of them do.
Yeah.
And.
The next one.
Um, yes.
He knows.
My wife.
Trying to think, what I, what did I write in the newsletter?
One of them.
That's our current.
Um, right.
So that, yeah.
Next comment, she's consistent, she consistently is professional in this area.
Yeah.
And then there's the specific one for A. It's effectively communicate services of the library to the public.
That was a new stream.
And the comment is, was US Newsstream promoted specifically as discussed previously? More visibility at events and selectmen meetings would be great too, so.
Hmm.
The, uh, US Newsstream, I think we talked about.
Yeah, that was earlier.
Yes, I also started, um. Communicating more of the board of selectmen. I sent them our most recent newsletter.
And it's, it's hard, I mean. That's what R E F A means, reference to A.
Reference A.
That wasn't, the, the other one, it's like, what's R E F? Okay, got it. If you E, okay.
I don't use abbreviations. Uh, we're good for this?
Yeah.
Okay, physical and budgetary responsibilities is three point six. Uh, but comments for attention to detail is impressive.
Hmm.
Dasi continues to shine in keeping budgetary compliance with state compliance.
Mm-hmm. Thank goodness.
I understand. Trust me, I was here.
Okay, professional activity, uh, three point four. Uh. I am always impressed by this. Uh, comment, R E F, reference C. Programs, resources and consultants of the regional library system and or network. Are used, are utilized for local library benefit.
Hmm.
Uh, and we, uh, the note relates to Christie Farah's visit, which was really something. Was there, I mean, she knew her stuff and she had the experience and she, we went through. Laura was there, we took all kinds of notes and then she followed up.
Yeah.
With, uh, a couple pages of notes. I mean, it was super.
Yeah.
And I think that's something too, a very strong point on Darcy. She is not one that, um. Feel she has to create the wheel. She knows, I just, even talking about the furniture, I can call the libraries, I, I can, oh. Um, NBLC has this, so you, you know, you're using the resources out there, which. That's why they're there. So thank you. I, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
As we had known before, that there have not been people that have done that in the past.
Also.
That's why we're paying these dues.
Since I have been doing this since twenty seventeen, at this point, I have learned a lot. But thank you.
You've come a long way, baby. No, really.
Okay, that, that was good.
Yeah.
Uh, ten, grantsmanship, gifts and donations. And of course, we're coming off the, uh, the big one.
Yes, the grants.
With Bergen and, uh, the, the children's room and all that stuff, so.
Yeah.
That was the comment.
Yeah, the grants also.
Okay. Goals. This was the lowest one, three point two seven, and they were actually two needs improvements. Uh. The only sort of. Thing I think I, I would wanna point out is, uh, that, that second comment.
Hmm.
Deadlines again could help here. Also more effort in rallying staff members to work together, to achieve goals. Also more frequent updates with trustees on strategic plan goals, so we can assist where appropriate. It was great to go over our goals at the October meeting, and this should be done more frequently. Now, we went over the strategic plan in October too, so.
Hmm.
I mean, it wasn't. Dasi is a credit to the library in Groveland.
Yeah.
But yeah, I hear what you're saying.
Yeah.
About the, the strategic plan. And goals. I actually, um, well, actually, you probably got the email. I, I, I have started to put together a focus group for the next round.
Yes, it's all that.
You got volunteer shit?
Uh, Lindsay has volunteered from the board. I would like. Hopefully someone who hasn't done it before, but hopefully I would like someone else, an additional board member.
Okay, I, I would.
You wanna do it? I'm gonna write you on my list. All you have to do is answer questions about the libraries. That's all you have to do.
I think we're trying to get some from the friends.
I have two people from the friends.
Great.
Yeah, I did it last time, so I didn't wanna just try and give somebody else a chance. But then I end up needing.
Yeah.
Anything.
And I do like that there.
Group, yeah.
And I did it the last time and I didn't step up this time, cause I, I felt the same way. It could be new people.
Right.
Yep. Yeah, thank you.
Uh. Next, summary of responses. No, this is my editorial comment. This form is absolute nonsense, in my opinion.
What's that?
Because, uh, it, what it does, it asks you to summarize all the exceptionals, meet expe- uh, expectations, need improvement. And then come up with a composite number and without any weighting factor, it doesn't mean anything.
Right.
It doesn't mean anything. And that was something that I would do as far as the column consolidation, and I don't think it's.
Yeah.
I don't think it's necessary. And then.
So is that?
Oh, I see what you're talking about.
Right, so is that how you got those numbers or? No.
No, those numbers were pre-printed on the form.
No, 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 like, okay, so if you looked up at eleven, overall average, three point two seven. Is that how you got to three point two seven? Is you used the summary of responses?
No.
No, you didn't use that, right, okay.
He averaged all the numbers together.
Which makes.
The average was in, in each and every individual goal.
Yeah.
The summary on that.
Right.
And this asked to put it all together.
All together and what's your average?
With another number, which, what are we gonna do with? Doesn't serve any purpose.
I think we, I think we did this, we incorporated from the town, the town one.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and with the town one, generally, it's not a board.
Right.
Yeah. If, if I was to come up with an overall average, I would take. All of these individual overall averages and divide by, is it eleven?
Yeah.
And that would be the average.
That makes sense.
Yeah. To me, that makes sense.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Probably be like three point four or five or something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
It's a great score.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you all.
Uh, Bob, can I ask you a question? All nine trustees turned in this evaluation.
No, that was, la, 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 two things. Uh, there were three mystery submissions. They weren't signed.
Oh, okay.
Uh, which is okay, doesn't matter that, and there were two. Non-apples, so I think next time we do this, uh, well, yeah, we'll, we'll, it'll be a little more. Uh, stringent on, uh, everyone fills it out and sign it. No, I'm, I'm not saying.
I don't know, well, tell me.
Matter.
Oh, all right.
Doesn't matter, you passed it in.
Yeah, I know, but I.
Doesn't matter.
I don't even remember how I.
You okay?
That was like, that sounded like it really.
Yeah, so, so it was, it's a quorum of submissions, but we really need.
Yeah.
Two for a hundred percent, yeah.
I, yeah, I, yeah.
So do we have to, what I wasn't clear about. So we, that the goals that Darcy had for last year, and then do we have to come up with, there's no goals for next year? What do we do now?
Yeah, I, I didn't know, we were supposed to.
Darcy wrote it.
Or her own goals or, yeah.
There was only, I think we only got one comment.
Oh, yeah, cause I, I did turn in. I sent you all that document with.
Yeah. Well, the two are on there.
Yeah.
For the, for the current year, right?
Oh, yeah.
See, then there's another hole.
To be, to be honest, I had that on the ones for the staff as well, and I did not fill out the ones for. Next year, cause I feel that that's. Hard when you're starting out with a doc, with one of these forms.
You should have to move full, yeah.
Yeah.
You need the last years to, the same form.
So, I mean.
To move full.
Like, would that be goals for fiscal year twenty five? And how do we really know what those are gonna be yet?
Right.
Well, so now, now I'm working through.
So when do we?
Okay, current, current year means what then?
Um, I, I thought it was been fiscal year twenty four. That's what I was going.
What we're in right now.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, but. Target dates for, for completion and stuff like that, isn't there?
Hmm.
So you're saying that we wouldn't talk about fiscal year twenty sixth, yeah?
Twenty five, right?
July first, that's fiscal year twenty five.
Fiscal twenty four, right, so.
Yeah, I think by the end of this year, I'll kind of have more of an idea. The, the end of this fiscal year, more of an idea of what we need for fiscal year twenty.
But that doesn't give you. I'm not. Doesn't give you much time.
Yeah, and if we're gonna do this again next year at this time, then you, there wouldn't be a lot of time to work on those goals. My thought, my assumption, I guess, were that these current goals were the ones you were currently working on, and that's what. Ended like October when we did this, and then the new goals would be from now going on. But it sounds like you wanna align them with the fiscal year?
That, that is just what I did by default, but we can change it for next time. To make it so that we're all on the same page. I, I'm happy to do whatever you all think is best with this, cause I, again, with these forms. It's kind of a, a process, um.
So should we?
We do so much by fiscal year, I think it's probably more comfortable for you to keep it in fiscal year.
Then should we adjust the, um, evaluation to align with the fiscal year then?
Well, well, maybe, hmm. Well, I, I mean. How I did the staff ones is that. Their current goals were for this current fiscal year, but I was evaluating them on the previous fiscal year.
Okay.
Well, let me ask a silly question. Is there a reason why we tie in goals and evaluations to a fiscal year as opposed to a calendar year? They are mutually exclusive. Some goals, of course, if they relate to finance, I could understand that, but, but even then.
You know.
It's a question.
It could go either way.
Yeah.
Um, I, ever since becoming director, I've really. With years, the, the year it started for July first for me, that's just how it seemed, um.
So, if that's now what's the comfortable, comfortable for you.
Yeah.
It kinda makes sense, though, that it would, it would align with when we do the evaluation.
Well, we could change the evaluation to.
I mean, if you, if you.
May.
Giving yourself from now until June thirtieth to do the archival access, that's not a lot of time. You know what I mean? But it's almost like, if we do, if we consistently do your evaluation in October.
Hmm.
But that, that would give you another day to deal, deal with, but you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
There's a gap there. If you say the goal should be accomplished by the end of the fiscal year, then you have a bunch of months before we even value it.
But the other, the flip side of that is, in June, we should be establishing the goals. For the fiscal, if we're gonna tie it to the fiscal year.
Right, that's what I'm saying. It almost needs to go with when we evaluate, which.
You wanna reevaluate goals in June, obviously I'll work towards.
What I wrote, what do you think works best for you, Darcy?
Oh, now I'm thrown off.
You, you might not even.
There's no reason not to take, sorry.
Oops, sorry.
What's that, Kathy?
I'm sorry, there's no reason not to take it till next month to think about it, Darcy. I'm sorry, there's no reason not to take it till next month to think about it, Darcy. You're accustomed to doing it one way and you might wanna think it through.
Well, I I do agree with Nancy that these, these were the goals from last evaluation, correct?
Yeah.
Right.
The goals that you gave us, the archival and the strategic plan.
Um.
Those were goals that you gave us last October.
Think so, yeah. Yes. And then I um, sent another document with new ones.
Well, I would agree with Kathy, we should, we should look at it uh, next month. Uh, for one, if you look at the goals, we we needed to to decide a target day for completion and a date of actual completion. This first one is an ongoing project, so that's, that's.
With that, we can't say, oh, Darcy, have that done by June.
Yeah.
One way to look at that too is to break that down into smaller steps so that we can actually. Uh, measure movement towards it, even if it is an ongoing goal.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I moved the table until next meeting.
Second, second. All those in favor? Lee, yes. Jen.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Mary Lou.
Yes.
Nancy.
Yes.
Jay.
Yes.
Laurel.
Yes.
Bob, yes.
All right.
So. Part of this in involves um, Darcy's signature saying that she has read, since it, does that be done now? Or do you wait for the goal part?
Wait for the goals.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are you okay with that?
Yeah, yeah.
Want everybody to feel comfortable.
Yeah.
Well, and also this is, uh, we're supposed to fill out a summary too.
Okay, yeah, once everything's filled out, it should also go to Rebecca.
And you know, when I'm looking up, last year, it was signed, I believe, on November ninth. We have a director evaluation and what Darcy wrote up. You know, do you remember, you had a little letter to.
Yep.
This was, so you wrote the letter October twelfth, but this, all of this was like November, what did I just say, whatever, November ninth.
Yes, I I think I gave you a letter last time.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
So, you know, we. It's okay if we.
Has been going for the first three years.
The first of the year, so yeah, we're, we're, we've done all this part, just that.
Right, just the goal, so that's.
Yes, we're in good shape, that's what I'm trying to say. Okay. Um, do you mind if I leave, I was supposed to be at choir at seven. Or do we, what do we have, we have tracking if other.
Yep, that shouldn't be too long.
All right, yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, so we're all set on the evaluation, old business tracking, uh, Kathy, any update on the the Beaton?
Yes, the uh, check for twenty thousand four hundred eighty-three dollars and twenty-five cents was delivered to the library director today.
It wasn't made payable to me, though. Just a check?
No, it was considerably less uh, than the first thought, which was between. Uh, what did I say, thirty and forty, but that was uh, this is a remainder charitable trust and that was uh. We we need somehow to thank uh, the trustees of that, of that thank you note to go uh. For the donation, I don't think there's any immediate relatives, so I think it would just be on record to send it to uh.
The attorney?
Yeah. I would, I'd send it to, yes, I must, is there a trustee, I didn't see the package, was there a trustee noted on that?
And it's charitable trust. There's. Any names?
Okay, then I think the attorney Beaton, attorney Terrence Beaton.
Yeah, the letters, it's all, everything is from. From Terry Beaton. So it doesn't have.
So that would be who the the thank you would be sent to.
If you have a, if you, if you have a file, if you're gonna have a file of that.
Yeah, that has to go to the, yeah, to the treasurer, to Mary Lou.
Yeah, Mary Lou's.
Yes, Mary Lou, it goes to you.
And where is it going to go?
It's an unrestricted, it told, and it states in the notice that it's an unrestricted donation, so it can go in the donation account.
Doesn't the town take care of that?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, it goes over to Michelle Beacon and she takes.
Yeah, the town treasurer should get that and go and go in the donation account, yeah.
But you should get the copies of the letters.
Yes, and and I have the original, the, I found the original stuff that got sent.
Right.
Got mixed in with some other stuff, I, I cleaned out my file and went through everything individually and found it. And so I have all the original stuff too, so we can have a little file of that in the, in, like, we can have a file folder of of that information.
Right.
Now, in the file.
And Darcy, a check, a copy of the check should go to Mary Lou as well.
Yeah, so.
It goes to the donation account?
Yes.
So do you, you want me to go ahead and deposit it, but make a bunch of copies?
Is it a donation account, the library?
It 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 gotta go through the town. It's, it's, it's part of our, I mean, often, often we fund things through the donation account.
It doesn't go to the town, the town administers it, but it.
Administers it, right.
Okay, but.
It's actually written in this letter that nobody else can use it, other than the library, yeah.
It's strongly written in that letter, yes.
Strongly written, yes.
Now, if Rebecca, Darcy, if Rebecca has a different plan for it, it, that could be done also, but it's uh. It can go into the donation account and the trustees can decide, because it does specify that it would be up to the discretion of the trustees. Can specify what it would, could be spent on. And uh, we were looking at furniture and that type of thing, that would be a good expenditure when Mary Jane died, Jerry's wife. Uh, he donated the furniture in the children's room. Uh, in memory of Mary Jane Tibbetts, so it might be something to consider.
Um, so, does Nancy, Nancy needs to know who to.
The content information for attorney Beaton.
Uh, Darcy will give you that.
Email you everything, oh, oh, I can look here, I'll email you everything, Nancy.
Thank you.
I'll give you everything, I, I'll deposit it, make a bunch of copies. And get that taken care of, I'll deposit it tomorrow.
Thank you.
Any other, other?
Very nice thing, very nice.
I have another. Uh, last year, we, as a, as a board, uh, gave gift cards to the library staff. Uh, everyone made a donation and I went out and had the cards. Um, do you wanna do that again this year? I don't mind doing, I don't mind going to get the cards, if people wanna do that, make the donation again and. People okay with that?
Yeah.
Do that, so how about? Um, between now and our next meeting, that'll give me time to get the cards. If anytime you wanna see me and give me something, and then. And and then be, at the next meeting, if you don't see me between now and then, you give it to me the next meeting.
Okay, and how many staff members are we talking?
Was suggested.
And what's the? There are seven others, other than me.
That include the pages?
Yeah. I, what's the pages?
So eight.
Eight.
Yeah.
Okay.
And you have.
I'm sorry.
How much were the gift cards that we gave?
Uh, I think.
Twenty dollars.
Twenty dollars each, I think.
It can't exceed fifty.
Right, yeah.
I had one thing under other, uh, Darcy, what's the hours for Thanksgiving?
Thanksgiving, um, as of now, unless I hear otherwise. We, on that Wednesday, are here ten to five, and then Thursday and Friday are closed. And then we're open that Saturday.
Ten to five, I thought it was ten to two last year, am I wrong?
It was, it's just, it goes year to year, sometimes the Board of Selectmen vote to give us a few extra hours.
It hasn't happened yet, is what you're saying.
Right, it it's usually like, if it happens, it's within the week.
Okay, so we're scheduled for ten to five on Wednesday, not open Wednesday night.
That's the schedule for now.
Okay. We're open the Saturday after Thanksgiving, am I right?
And then we're closed Saturday for Veterans Day.
One other, other for me, uh, I would like to request that if people have uh, agenda items for the next meeting. If they could try to submit it to me, send it to me by November twenty ninth.
And also, one other thing, the sign out front, uh, Darcy, is there a way you could ask Steve if he could. Kinda spruce it up a little bit with some paint, the white paint looks like it's peeling on the post.
Oh, I will talk to him.
Also that, the, are you talking about our new sign that we put in?
Yeah.
Yeah, the the bush around it needs to be trimmed, it's oddly obscuring the, the sign too.
Yeah.
If somebody, yeah, it just needs to be trimmed a little bit.
At least know who to talk to for whatever needs to be done. Yeah.
Uh, any comments from the public? That answers that. Uh, our next meeting is December thirteenth. Uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So we'll make a motion to adjourn, yeah, I second it.
Okay, all those in favor, can we just do a yay?
Yeah.
Yay.
All right, and you oppose?